Are you ready? Katie, good?
Yep.
All right, we all please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, now we had some, I know we've got a, maybe half a dozen things to add to the agenda. And Sally, I think you have the master list?
Um, I would like to add the chicken law for the purposes of receiving-
Can I speak up a little bit?
Oh, I'd like to add the chicken law proposal for the purposes of receiving additional suggestions from board members. I would like to add concept approval of local food waste. Planning priorities, just I'm gonna collect what we should probably have that on the agenda.
Now, let's have it on for like five minute discussion of that.
Okay. Planning priority and designation of our official newspaper. And that is all, and the waiver fee for vendors for the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. Those are the five that I'm gonna look.
Uh, I'll move to add all five.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, wait, was there any other, anything else?
Um, no, that was everything.
Okay, good. Uh, so I'll move to add all five?
Or, oh, the whole list?
Mm-hmm. Second?
Uh, all in favor?
I don't know.
Thank you. So, let's, uh... We also have, uh, three interviews, I believe, for the Shade Tree Commission. Is Ariana here?
Mr. Littlefoot is here.
That's what he's here for?
Yeah.
The interviews.
But he doesn't live in the village.
Right, so he's an ineligible for membership, unfortunately. Um, hmm. Well, who, uh, we also have-
Mr. Littlefoot. Ramondo and Josh.
You live in the town, right?
I live in the town.
And the Shade Tree Commission is a village commission.
Okay.
And we're thinking that maybe that's what you received a call for and that the clerk did not know you weren't a village resident.
Well, on the email that was transferred, my address was on it.
I, it very well could be, and I just didn't realize it wasn't a village address.
That could be-
Plus the rural qualifications, so... We just need a help out, if that's not possible, we need help out.
Uh, well, we're all hesitating because we would love the help.
Exactly.
But the village code specifically states that all members must be residents of the village. So, we're legally not able to appoint you formally.
Okay.
Um, though now I'm trying to recommend how we get your help anyway.
Um, I mean-
Tell the meetings and-
Yeah, like, yeah, you can't, I mean, it's just me, I'm weak.
It's just me? We will ask the Shade Tree Commission and we will offer Mr. Littlefoot as a consultant.
I, I think that they would welcome that, but obviously I can't speak for them.
I will speak to the Shade Tree Commission.
Sorry to have you waiting and be confused. Is that, uh, is that all right by you?
That's fine.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Littlefoot.
Thanks for having me.
And the clerk cashier telephone number?
What do you?
I do.
The clerk cashier, okay, good.
Yeah, I will.
And Ramondo is not here. Who is the third?
Josh.
Josh. Josh who?
Um, Ramondo will be here at eight. He had, he was an obligation to work and, and he and Josh will be coming.
Oh, perfect, all right, great, so we, I didn't want to keep it on.
Yes, excuse, yes.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
It's okay.
Sorry.
Don't get excited, it's okay.
Please don't start cutting our cheese out.
Thank you, Mr. Littlefoot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Uh, are there any announcements then?
Uh, yes. I have, uh, a few announcements. Uh, one that on this past Monday, the twenty-third, was the inaugural meeting of the Public Outreach, uh, Committee for the col- consolidation study. And we had a good meeting and we expect before the end of the month to have our second meeting. However, if there's anyone out there that would like to, uh, be on the committee and work with us, we welcome them. And you can be in touch with the village clerk and she'll be in touch with the committee. Uh, just, uh, also a heads up that before the next meeting, I'm gonna ask that the, um, fire contract be on the agenda for our first meeting in August and ask the mayor if he would circulate the form of the agreement as agreed to by the fire department and the fire company to the members of the board so that they can ask any questions before that.
Did you, um, I emailed you a copy of a reword?
I don't, I don't remember receiving that, but if you'll do it again, I'll look at it.
I did it when I corrected.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll resend, 'cause I hadn't heard back from you yet, so.
Oh, okay, well, I, I don't believe I had it, but if you'll send it to me tomorrow, I'll, I'll read it right away.
Yeah, I wanted to get your input and things before I circulated it more broadly.
Super. Um, and then the last thing is that, uh, trustee Bosco and I attended the N- the NICOM zoning and planning education program at Albany Law School today and, uh, we thought that went well too.
Great.
First, I'd love to invite the community to join us for the hundred and twenty-fifth celebration, which is gonna be August fifth, from eleven to four. Um, two, I'd like to inform the board that our sister city, Neimi, is sending a delegation of twelve people and they will be here September eighth and leaving September fourteenth. And-
Do you know who's coming?
Uh, two adults and, and ten, I believe, female students, college students.
Uh, Kiyoshi Hachi, is that his name, something like?
He's coming.
He's got, Kiyoshi's going great, I love Kiyoshi.
Um, and so, if, as, as we get more information, I'll keep this all informed. And I'd like to thank my esteemed colleague, Brian, who's going to put on all the consolidation study committees on Facebook and we hope you all will.
That being brought up, I'd like to say that the, uh, official village of New Paltz Facebook group is now operational. If you wanna join, please search Village of New Paltz on, uh, Facebook. Find it, join up and keep current data, Facebook things, and events, Village.
Is that different than the New Paltz one, really?
It's a bit different than New Paltz.
And so you teach me how to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's not like conversational, it's just us-
So I gotta search for it again?
Informational, yes.
So I gotta search for it again as well?
Yes, yes.
Neutral government information, not like commentary.
Well, yeah, that's fine, but that's what I, you know, I just don't wanna-
So, no, you can't go on there and tell us anything, maybe?
And vote, and you can't vote in the other.
I, I don't know anything there, Steve.
Vote online.
Any other, uh-
Can, can I tell someone one thing? You know, I saw recently that in Washington State you can register to vote online?
In Oregon, they, you can vote online. You go to passcode and you hit submit and you vote.
Wow, so many more people would vote.
They did, it spiked it. In, in, actually, in Japan, we, there's, it's illegal not to vote. They fine you if you don't vote. But they also have no idea about it as an option, so you can just say, yeah, why not? Which I think would be a fantastic idea in, in-
That's our write-in option.
Yeah. Or you can go ahead with it.
Uh, all right, let's, let's see, announcements, uh, is, any other announcements? Uh, public comment? No? Aaron?
Yeah, my editor had a question. I guess, um, is, uh, even as we was closing down, is there work done in the sewer?
Yes.
What's going on down there, just a-
That is, uh, uh, I'm blanking on the words. Uh, we're installing new cyclin chambers. And I wish I could explain to you exactly how those work or what they are in particular or what they're called. Um, and, uh, what it is, is it's going to prevent some of the backflows going in the sewer plant. Because the main choke point in our plant is from, uh, the plant itself running down, uh, to Water Street, right in front of the box factory after Washington Market. Um, until just a few years ago, all the sewers in the village went to that one point and then went into the, into the plant. Uh, we did do, I believe in oh-six? Oh-seven? I don't know the exact year. Put in that, that line next to the, the DuBois sport?
Yeah, when you had to get the permission to cross.
Yeah, when we put, so that, that took some of the, the northerly sewage flow in and put it in, but it also put it kind of right back at that entrance. So the cyclin chamber is gonna, I believe, basically capture it if it, if it backs up, um, in major storm events. So it, it's not gonna eliminate the problem, it's one more brick in the wall to prevent, you know, those sewage geysers from working in a manhole. Um, so that work was funded by a six hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, we received last year from the Small Cities Program at the state. The same program we had gotten money for the year before me, but she just applied recently for another round of funding for repair of, um, old sewer lines on private property up in the Prospect Street area. So it's-
And the water tower from last year.
Yeah, separate things, yeah. So that's, um, I can't recall off the top of my head when that target date for completion is, but I know we, I mean, we have, we've had no, nothing but, I mean, it's been smooth since they started construction.
If I call tomorrow, you know, we-
I mean, I can find it, I just don't have it right at recall, you know, I can-
And is that related to number five? That's my other question. Is that related to number five in the agenda? Emergency repairs needed?
No, that's, that's unrelated.
Okay.
There are two, two separate issues. Um, any other public comment? All right.
Wait, didn't you guys wanna speak out, or you're just here for the discussion?
Just to give listeners a listen.
Oh, okay, great.
Welcome.
All right. Um, now, are there any of the additional, the, the, the add-ons that we should deal with first, or should we just go by any order? And is there anyone here for anything in particular? Uh, what are you here for, Adam?
The handicap there.
All right, which, which number is that?
Two.
Oh, number two, perfect.
I'm here five.
And five?
One and five.
All right. Chicken law, of course. Why don't you do them in that order then?
One?
One, five, and then chicken law? All right, uh, or, I'm sorry, two, five, and chicken law? Uh, number two, Sally, that was your project?
Um, and one?
Huh? We're just, we're, we're trying to do the things people hear specifically for to get them home, so don't just go, one?
Is that fracking?
One, okay. Well then, I guess let's go one, two, five, and chicken law, like that.
I'm okay.
All right, so fracking, let's see, this is in, I'm going back and forth. Um, Ariana has been working really closely with Joe Ariel to, to get, uh, good language and in my opinion, we have a much better law now than we did the first time we saw it. Um, but Ari, you wanna speak it back down and get, catch up to speed?
Yeah, we actually, at the NICOM conference, there was a whole session on banning fracking and all the different ways that you can utilize your local laws to not allow this to happen. Um, and, and this actually wasn't one of them. Um, but we did talk to them about this one and, uh, and basically, you know, we can, we can do whatever we want to with this. Um, and the other things, if we wanted to put any, anything like that in place later would be probably significantly simpler. Um, and there's no reason not to do both according to what, the information that we, uh, got today.
So, both what? This and the else?
Both, something else.
Anything.
Yeah. Thanks. Um, yeah, I had a copy over here, but, all right. Um, so, well, this, this is really a community rights-based ordinance. Um, I mean, if you read it, you should be familiar with what it is. Joe did speak with Ben Price from the Community Environmental, uh, Legal Defense Fund and, um, they, they had things where they didn't see eye to eye and things where they did see eye to eye and they came to something where they were both happy with it. Um, and, and Joe, Joe said that there were, there were things he hadn't thought of and there were things that Ben hadn't thought of. I think in particular because he works in Pennsylvania and we're in New York. Um, but that this is what Joe came up with for us and I, I mean, I feel, I guess I feel comfortable with it. I kind of wanna see what everybody else thinks about it. Um, I think that this would be something good to do and it would protect us, um, in terms of the citizens' rights side of it and the environmental rights side of it. And then if we wanted to do something else, that would be, you know, like the roads that we had talked about, um, that would just be additional ways that we can protect ourselves. Yes.
Two questions. Um, did you learn anything today that you think we need to incorporate?
I feel like it would be different. Um, like it would be, what, what we learned today would be something separate.
In parallel.
In parallel, yeah.
And the second thing is, when we first had this discussion, the mayor brought up, um, the idea of banning transporting-
Right.
materials through the village.
Which I know looks like it was a good idea. I don't think it's a good idea anymore.
Oh, you don't?
I, I, 'cause I couldn't figure out any way we would actually enforce that.
Oh, well, that makes you a lot more-
Other than like pulling out every rock and like, you know, getting what's in there.
You withdraw that concern?
I withdraw that concern.
Well, I will actually say that that was half of what they talked about today, was that that's a way to protect ourselves.
Did they talk about, how do you tell what's in much rock, like how to fracking from some, another kind of rock?
You know, they, they did not say that, but they, there was a map that they showed us of, uh, communities across the state and, and this is something I will obviously share with all of you. Um, communities across the state that are, either have a ban in place or a movement to ban it or a moratorium. Um, and so I, it seems like, I don't, I don't know how we would regulate it. Um, because they did not really talk about that, but it's like, you know, we-
I mean, the only reason why I can think of that would be beneficial is if we ban the transport of certain materials and then there's an accident and they spill, we could then go after the people for having brought it here in the first place.
Or if you were risky for running a stunt.
That's true. Or we just hire someone to follow and check the danger of fracking site.
Um, I mean, the, the other thing is that they did talk about how you can't regulate roads that you don't own.
That's, uh, it's just gonna-
Uh, yeah. That was obviously a big part of that.
It was just premise on the one thing, since, since they would be coming from the west.
Right.
If they came over the state roads like, uh, over two and nine, two and nine, and came over the bridge to get to the thruway, there's that one section between the bridge and, and the rest of the valley. That's not a favor. So that's the only smile.
A toll.
Yeah. Well, I, actually, I, I am perfectly happy just setting up a public hearing for this law as written with one exception, that I don't think these to slow us down. And I checked with Joe and we sort of did, I'm trying to find what I'm looking for.
Which part?
Uh, the penalties, 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 penalties.
Section seven violation.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, if you notice, uh, section, uh, this would add, uh, section one oh-six dash nine B, uh, which for the public says, for every violation of any provision, uh, I'm editing a little bit, uh, uh, they shall be fined, uh, not more than two hundred and fifty per day or imprisonment of not more than fifteen days as provided in the penal law. Um, I have a problem with this because if you're, if, if, if we end up having fracking and this law becomes something that is used and we charge someone with, um, a corporation doing fracking, two hundred and fifty dollars, they probably spend it on paper cups in a week. So what I asked Joe is could we put in a provision, remove it from the penal law and have it be two hundred percent of the prior year's total profits of the corporation responsible?
Whoa.
Two hundred percent of the prior year's total profits as the fine. This is because, and I-
And, and Joe said, yeah?
Joe said he's gonna see what kind of, whether we can do that. He says he, well, actually, I don't think so. I don't think so either, but we can get a lot closer to that than, than here is what is the point, so.
I was gonna suggest a thousand dollars, two hundred percent.
No, but here's the thing. He's gonna, no, he said, he's gonna, he said, uh, um, good thought, I'll see if there are limits. So we're gonna see. Because the instance, the reason I was thinking about this is because of Elliot Spitzer. Um, and his reputation as, you know, the sheriff of Wall Street before everything else. Um, and one of the big problems with Spitzer's strategy was that, say, for example, he, he, uh, sues an out-of-state polluter for violating the, the, the clean air, you know, polluting our air. Um, there was never any case law set because he never took it to court. He would settle. And so what he would, we'd do is we'd get a fine, a ten thousand dollar fine, a discounted fine. And what happened then is it didn't act in any way, shape, or form as a deterrent. All it was, was the price of whatever went up fractionally and now the company knows. He basically regulated the, the pollution market. He set, he, he agreed with corporations on how much they should add to their annual budget to pay the fines to pollute. So if that's the case on that scale-
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty or a thousand is even, I mean, that's just nothing. I mean, they're not even gonna bother showing up in court for that. So, but if we do something that is actually, actually going to hurt them and hurt their ability to function as an organization and perform their whatever, I just figured that's, that scale is something, and because it's a corporate thing, I think, you know, people, I think this should be a different category for, uh, fines. But when we're dealing with an institution that's immortal and, you know, has billions of dollars, how can we write a law that would actually be effective? So.
Yeah, I think that's awesome.
I don't know. We're gonna see what, what, how much we can jack that up to some point, actually be meaningful, a meaningful fine. 'Cause basically this right here is no fine, it's not a fine. We're basically saying, don't do this, but we're not gonna do it until you, if you do. So we need to find some way to do something.
So, my question is, 'cause you were saying you're okay with setting a public hearing on it, except for one thing. Can we set a public hearing on it and change that before the data?
That's exactly what I, I talked to Joe about. If, if, 'cause what I said was, would that be, 'cause the, the state law says that you can, you can change a law after a public hearing, but the, I'm sorry, if you make changes to a law at a public hearing, you can't adopt it if those changes are substantive or substant- substantial.
Mm-hmm.
So I wanted to know if that hit the threshold and he didn't seem to think it would. And even if it did, it may take some time and let's not wait. So we set the public hearing and can change it in a month or two if we need to. Or if we find out in the meantime, we can do it at the hearing itself. So either way. And maybe another idea, a better idea to do the same.
I'm gonna move to set the hearing for first meeting, August August sixth, with the understanding that before-
Eighth, eighth.
Eighth, sorry. That before the proposed law is published, that the board will accept a refinement of Article B in section seven.
See, we can't, because once you set a public hearing, it has to be verbatim untouched and available the next day. We can't change, once we set the public hearing, we can't change it until the hearing itself.
Okay, so we can change it in the hearing then?
We can make minor changes to the hearing. The question is whether this would be minor. If not, we would have to then amend it later.
Then I would suggest that for every violation of any provision of this chapter, the person violating the same shall be subject to dash. And we will fill in at the hearing what the bond's gonna be.
I don't-
That would do it?
Yeah.
That would do it?
It doesn't, I don't know if, I don't know if the logic would fit with me on thinking.
Except then, then if, if, then if the provision of, of enforcement is substantive and we can't make the change without a, a new, new law, new notice, a new public hearing.
We have nothing.
We have not, yeah, we don't even have the two hundred and fifty.
We have to amend it to ten thousand.
I think, I think you set the public hearing, it would be as written. And then if we find a better thing to do, like all laws, we find a better way to do it, we'll change it.
Yeah, I think that's a better, better route also, because if we're- So friendly amendment?
Set the hearing.
So friendly amendment to the motion to accept the law as written?
I'm gonna amend my motion to say that we will set the hearing on neutral law number whatever.
Yeah.
On fracking for August eight.
Seven thirty PM, because we have to set a time.
Yep.
Um, all right.
Let's move to a second.
Oh, yeah.
Question or second?
Question, well, discussion.
All right, I'll second it.
Well, forget to have a second, thanks.
Okay, um, from my reading and being at the program today, I think we have at least three theories where, uh, we can keep hydro fracking from the, uh, village. Uh, one is the road preservation program, which isn't so, the, the problem is we don't have many roads that this would apply to. But that one, uh, we might wanna consider anyway because it's, it's about damages. There was some kind of statistic that one of these heavy trucks is the equivalent of ninety thousand cars or something going over the road as far as repairs and that kind of thing.
I think it was nine thousand.
Nine thousand, well, it's only as well.
Um, nine thousand.
All right, nine thousand to one. Um, so I think we should consider that. Uh, the other thing is regulating the zoning. And, um, for example, you could say that you're not gonna have it because of the nature of our village and so forth. We don't want any heavy industrial zone in our village.
We don't have it.
I was saying. This is considered a heavy industrial zone, which you see the, the fracking sites with all the trucks and the paraphernalia, et cetera. And so that's one way that you could keep them from doing fracking in the village. And there's other zoning things and you can actually make a, a ban on it. Some of the municipalities have, uh, done a moratorium to like wait and see what happens from the state, but I, I think we should be more aggressive than that and do some kind of a ban. And, and, and heavy industrials, one, but there are other topics. Um, I, I had, you know, some, some language changes for the one that's before us, but I'm gonna suggest that we get all, let's say we decided to do all three of those and have the public hearing on all three of them at once and pass all of them at once and put it on the, on the books so the people coming to, uh, give testimony would come and they'd all be discussed on the same night. I, I don't know if there's that much of a rush that a week or two would matter. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of trying to stop it here, but I think we should cover all bases and do it intelligently so that it makes it very difficult for people to wanna try to do that in our municipalities. So I, I would suggest that we look at that, uh, from the materials that we have, uh, meet with our attorney, get the input from everyone on the board and then perhaps we can suggest three local laws at the, the first meeting and then schedule a hearing on all of them, one after the other. Hear everyone has to say, and if we like it, then go for the whole package. That, that's what I would be in favor of.
How, how do you, since we don't allow heavy industry in any zone current in the village, what would, haven't we already basically kinda done that? Uh, what zoning law will we have to change, uh, 'cause we already, we already exist.
Well, I, I think, I think, I, I think we have to, um, you know, look at the particulars on the cases that were involved with that, but you might have to say something about your finding that having fracking in your village is heavy industrial and we don't have that in the village. You know, make some kind of a affirmative finding. The case, the cases that have come down so far, uh, have been on the bans against that you, the state has preempted local governments for saying how to regulate fracking, but they haven't preempted where you can do this. So under your zoning law, you can say where you're gonna do this. And I think that there's nothing wrong with our approach on the civil rights, environmental rights is what we have before us now, but I think we should also do the ban situation as well. Uh, and the two cases where it came up so far on, in the lower courts about banning, it's been upheld. Now, of course, the industry is appealing those and they have two levels of appeal, so it'll be a year before we know what the Court of Appeal says about it. But I don't think we should wait with a moratorium to find out. I think we should go on all three of these theories, do laws that we think are the best, have hearings on all of them and if the testimony doesn't contradict what we think is gonna be, that we pass those local laws. That's, that's what I suggest.
Even need three laws or could you make one?
Well, I suppose in a local law, you can do that, but it, but it'd probably be better to do three because they're, they're gonna be going to different parts of our code.
Okay.
It, it'd probably be more like amendments than, like code amendments than actually, uh, you know, one of it might be a law, but I think, from what it sounds like in terms of zoning, I think it would be more of a mending.
As long as it's thematically related, I mean, this is just a paperwork thing, but, um, as long as thematically related, you can change multiple sections of the code under one local law. We wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to notice, send up three notices, you know, we wouldn't have to have separate public hearings for all of them, we could have one.
I think when, when all the, the mayor and all the trustees look at this information and we share it with our attorney, then the recommendation can be do one local law with various sections or three separate ones. I, I'm not hung up on that, but I think we should cover the three topics at the same time so that we obviously made an informed decision and make it as solid as we can.
I think that's a great idea and what our attorney has said is that, you know, the testimony gets with the teeth. That's, it's a very important aspect of it, is people coming out and speaking in agreement with us on this and, you know, standing with facts and whatnot. So I think it makes a lot of sense and I think we can get a lot of people who are very interested to come out and make it a really big thing and, you know.
Yeah.
Say that-
It'll be one item agenda for that night.
Could be. I mean, I-
Could be a special meeting.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. And I think, I mean, it'd be really even nice if we could all get together in a workshop or some environment where we can all sit together with the attorney and just hash all of this out.
Yeah.
Just really like, I'm like kinda inspired right now about this.
I, and I, and I think when you, when you get copies of what Ariana and I have from today-
Yeah.
There's also, uh, an update in, uh, municipal law section, uh, newsletter that came today and there's other information. So I, I, I think together that information will give us the opportunity to really make an informed way of acting.
Yeah.
What do you think?
Either one's fine by me.
Okay, I'm-
I mean, I, I like the PR, I like the theater of doing, doing it once.
Yep.
But I also have no problem if, if people are antsy to get started, to have this, you know, to do them, even this one first.
Yeah.
And then, then the zoning, even if it's multiple zoning, have the zoning thing-
Exactly.
Separate out the rights and, because I like this establishment, 'cause I had a long talk with Joe about this as well. 'Cause I've been, I mean, I've been talking to people around the country who I know who are dealing with this all over the, I mean, there's weird variations, actually, it's worth, in, in some places, fracking is the environmentally preferable option. In Florida, an example, when they have, where they have offshore drilling, things like that, so. There's an interesting kind of leftist or environmental concern debate about, depending on the geology where you live. But here, um, because we have other uses for, once we establish this precedent, we can put other things in this section. Um, because we have other uses for, once we establish this precedent, we can put other things in this section, um, other rights, so it's not, this isn't just about fracking, this is about establishing a new. Whole category of our code, and fracking is just the first example of what's something that goes into it, so I'd actually like to see this enacted as soon as possible.
Oh, yeah.
And then, but I didn't know if that's Stuart Reeves saying that this is important to go with the zoning, to go with this.
Well. I, I think if you're gonna get a, a crowd out, why not have them have all three of them, so they only have to come out once and they can do it, number one. Number two, if we're gonna do this tonight, I ask you to bear with me, I have a few. Language changes to it, there's a few, it's not extensive, it would take a couple minutes, but if you wanna vote on it, I'm not opposed to it, but I have a few. There's a couple things in here that need to be changed, some things that are not a complete sentence and so.
But. Uh, I guess Ariana, this is your, what do you want, which, which act would you prefer?
Um, I mean, if, if these edits are really mostly grammatical, um, is it possible for us to, or it's gotta be verbatim?
Well, we can, if you wanna indulge me a few, few minutes, we can probably just work them out, it's up to you, whatever you write.
Well, let, let's decide first whether or not we're, we're gonna do all three or.
Right.
Oh, oh, I think we should, I think we should do this tonight.
Okay, that, yeah, that's.
Um, or, or at least first, you know, may, if, you know, if we have to set a public hearing, you know, after we do the edits, I think that's fine. Um, but I think that we shouldn't wait to do this until we have everything, even though I, I really like your, you know, the sentiment of having everybody come for all of those, everything at once, but I think, I think that people will show up for things no matter what.
You, you two have had a conversation about this, Stuart obviously has discussed his suggestions to you.
At the public hearing. Um, well, we kind of talked more about the chicken law today.
Well, we talked about the theories that we learned about today, but I didn't, I didn't go over the wording things.
But, yeah. In terms of the specifics.
Cause, I mean, we have agreed that when things are in the packet. The telephone is supposed to be picked up, and the changes and suggestions made before the meeting, we've got a long agenda tonight.
So you're saying you don't wanna discuss, you're saying you don't wanna discuss it tonight?
What I'm gonna say is that I think that proposed language changes, if they're acceptable, is Ariana ought to go to Joe before the hearing.
Oh, yeah, they're, I mean, they're definitely acceptable.
So table this as set the public hearing at our next meeting, after Joe is, uh, uh, after we have a, a final, final verdict?
She says it will matter if not.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought that's what you were saying, is we should hold off.
No, I'm saying.
Oh, I have no problem with Stuart, with anything that Stuart, you know, has written here.
Okay, look, hold on, right, now, now I'm confused, so we got two, two options, two options, so we got, um, set a public hearing, discuss, discuss Stuart's changes and set a public hearing on this law.
I'm not sure what I'm being asked.
Or hold off on both of those things until we have the other ideas that Stuart had, so, I mean, what I hear is you, me, and Sally are kind of leaning towards just doing this. Brian likes the third, uh, Sally, Sally, Stuart likes these, um, so I'm just kind of, I'm fumbling for what the next thing we do should be, so.
I'm sorry, I would love to take more initiative here, but I got an hour and a half of sleep last night. I worked and then went to the Nightcom Conference, so my brain is kind of fried, but I, I really am okay with any of it.
Okay.
Um, I don't feel, I, I, you know, I, I wanna do this, and I don't think we should wait more than our next meeting, um.
Okay. So, uh.
Would you have the other two laws ready by the next meeting?
I.
Probably, I think.
I mean, we.
We could, we, uh, uh, we.
Yeah.
They're not extensive.
Well, we have another week too, we, we have two weeks between, so.
No, they're simple.
You have two weeks between them now and the next meeting.
We can do it, and you want, um, the attorney to look at it before that, before the next meeting?
I think it's possible.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we have to make sure it's legal before we set the public hearing.
Okay, well, we, hopefully, we're not gonna ask for anything illegal, but anyway, uh, we could do, do that in a week and then give him a week to give his comments.
I have all three at once.
Does that sound good, since we have to wait anyway because we, that's some minor changes?
I'm willing to do that.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, well, esp- well, especially if we're going to have all of it at our next meeting, then that'll be, that'll be cool.
Yeah. Yeah.
We withdraw your second.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's withdrawn.
So, we're gonna table that until the, the meeting of August eight?
Sorry, Ari.
No, there is, there is no public hearing.
No.
No.
All right.
The subject and the audience ask any questions or we're gonna do it?
Uh, that's what public comment is for, but if there's something quick and specific, I mean, I, in, in terms of, if you have a question on the process or the details of this law, sure. If it, you, if it's a matter of interest in a general conversation about fracking and, and the village, we don't.
No, it's about, um, talking about three things that might be included in this law, and I keep thinking about, um, aquifer protection. I was thinking the town had hearings a couple of years ago, and they wanted somebody to propose a development in the hotel, and I was saying it's great mall, and everybody was jumping all over it because of the aquifer. Um, is that something we can use as part of the, um?
Not really, I mean, it indirectly affects us, cause the aquifer surrounds us, but since almost all of the village except for one little section of, uh, Puban Street, I think, and a couple scattered. Are all on municipal, uh, water, treated water, um, if the aquifer, if something goes on with the aquifer, everyone in the village has clean water anyway, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't poison our water supply. Um, our water comes from the Shok in, in the, uh, and, uh, the, our reservoirs in the mountain, and so as long as we're not fracking, I guess, in the Shokin reservoir area, our water supply would be okay. So I'm, I'm not personally, I don't know how much leverage that, how much more meat that would give to the, to the law, you know what I mean? But, um, but for the town, absolutely, totally different situation, sir?
Some communities in New York are facing fracking fluids coming in as anti, as deicing for the roads.
Mm-hmm.
We don't think we're going to keep those from coming in by the state or the county.
The county executive has actually already banned the, any use of, uh, of the slurry on, on any, on the county.
It's been banned. It's been banned on the county level, yeah.
County law.
Great job, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
One, one of the problems is that. The roads that they would travel on and that they might deal with in New Falls are state highways, and, uh, we can't tell the state what to do with their highways.
You want to hold it up to do?
Might as we'd like to.
That's not true, because if you can show that it would affect the health and welfare of the residents, you can ban it.
Uh, there probably is a way, it may be complicated and blurry, but, but there's probably.
So we're gonna do this.
August, have this discussion, table the discussion to August eighth, at which point we'll have, uh, Stuart's changes vetted by Joe and a new draft.
And Ariana is gonna work with me on the other parallel.
Yes.
Separate, separate laws or one big law?
Yes, let's let everybody know, we will totally be working on that.
All right.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
So is it close to questioning about fracking after you discussed?
It is very, very quick.
Close?
No, if it's quick, Mara.
I don't know if the premise is in the lawyer building a law, if the premise is that, um, uh, what is this premise, what reason are we given that we do not have a right? That's question one, question two is aquifers primarily supply water, so our water could be affected by other towns being affected by, as we address a, um.
Yes, if, 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 for example, fracking, uh, happened up in the, uh.
Catch.
And spilled into the reservoir theoretically, if enough went in, but it would be, had to be a lot, um.
Well, they say little is a lot, so I just want to.
Well, we can't ban what goes on in other communities.
Remind, remind myself of that thread, remind myself of that thread, that little is a lot.
Sure. Yeah, and even, and as Sally goes out, we couldn't do anything about that anyway.
No, that's not, I know, so Barry is the, I'm sorry, I forgot the premise, I didn't make it better, but thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Thank you. Uh, all right, so Sally, you want to, I'm sorry, all right.
And. I just wanna tell, Mara, the, the law is, uh, is in the packet, um, on the internet, if you go to the village website, it's up there.
I'm sorry, would you say that?
The, the law, it, it's on the website, it's on the village website, yeah, so, so if you wanna read it, you can.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Uh, which law, the one that Joe was writing?
What, what we're talking about right now, yes.
You've already edited it.
Well, it, it's already, yes, it, it gets posted with the agenda and the packet, so.
Thank you very much.
It is on the website until it is proposed.
Yeah. Well, if it's in the packet.
Our packets are.
Yeah.
Yeah, our packets are.
Right, it's not on its own, it'll be under agenda and packet for tonight's meeting.
Thanks so much, everybody.
Thanks, Mara, uh, all right, uh.
You sure, we can go now.
You can go now, I promise, I'm gonna get water, so say whatever you want.
Possibly. Okay, I, I will proceed, um, as you know, we had a discussion a while ago, uh, with a, a large audience, uh, concerning the development that's going on on Church Street. And we have two residents on Church Street who are wheelchair dependent, and the concern is that there is no handicap parking designations on Church Street. And so originally I proposed that, but then I realized. We have to have a hearing on that, and the plant, the planning group, um, has been talking about handicapped parking all throughout the village. We have currently no handicap parking on Main Street, we currently have no handicap parking on North Chestnut Street. And we have no handicap parking on North Front Street where it's level enough to have it. So what I did, what you all got, was expand the proposed amendment to not only include fifty-seven, fifty-nine Church Street, but also, um, Main Street, Chestnut, and North Front. So you have that, and, and I will move over.
Second.
And I ask that the hearing be set for August eight.
Aaron, any questions?
Yes, I, you gave exact, uh.
May I have a second?
I second it.
I got, I did catch that.
Do you have the addresses for Church Street, do you have the addresses for Main, Chestnut, and North Front?
No, those really are determined by the ADA officer who happens to be Kathy Monnet and who, and so they will determine. By the ADA law and whatever, I would probably speak to this better than I can, uh, what the appropriate, we know fifty-seven and fifty-nine are, cause they have done that. But we as a board want to leave the actual space creations to the departments of professionals.
Um, the only question I have that I apologize just occurred to me. Is, do we, do we have to, did you say? Do we have to have the specific addresses in the code?
In that case, yes.
So, wouldn't we have to wait for the law until we have these addresses?
No, no, I went back and I asked.
You double checked, okay, I just want, I just want, there's no stop signs, we, I ran into a problem, cause you actually have to have a very specific description of all stop signs.
No, some of ours, what I thought was really odd is that we had to designate in the law what streets, and in some cases, specific house numbers. I didn't know, I don't understand why we can't just have a general law that says, well, I have handicap parking on every street in New Falls, but.
Cause we designate all parking spaces in New Falls.
Blue tells me we have to do it this way, so we'll do it this way.
And the other thing is, this needs to get into the official format, and we, I mean, Joe, can you do that, okay?
Yes. Joe, please, Fisher.
All right, good.
I actually did put it in official format the way you've done for the zoning code, but I want to double check again.
Right, you, are you with?
So, yeah, how is it going to look when we put, when is Kathy going to make the decision as to where the spots are?
Once we get this over.
After that?
Yeah.
And then we're gonna put that in the code?
No, no.
We don't have to, we don't have to.
The way our code is written.
We don't have to spell it out in the code, where the spots are.
No, not specific places.
Just that there are spots.
Unless we have two specific places or one specific place that we want to, what we want in Church Street. But for the rest, it just says the way to work, on the northern side between Bullman Boom.
Okay.
Okay.
Pick up downstairs, the entrance.
So where's the other one? Oh, there we go.
I sent you that there, but, but this is my, this is my.
Yeah. All right, uh, so it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And next we have number five. Uh, number five.
And the rest of you.
Who's here, no, no, who's here for five? Oh, Aaron's here for five.
Aaron's here for five?
Yeah. Go ahead, Jacob, this, it's, it's very, it's very good, um.
I don't know.
Here, Aaron, you want, Aaron, you want this?
Sure.
It's the memo, uh, so I moved that we approved the budget modifications requested by, uh, Superintendent Truwalker for emergency repairs to the water treatment plant.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Uh, Aaron, two important points, uh, sole supplier, so we didn't, I think we get multiple prices of bid, and because it's a, also, we wouldn't have had to necessarily do the emergency too.
But with emergency, yes.
And the emergency, oh, I'm sorry, the emergency is, it's not, it's not acute, it's general, um, we're, we're all, we're in the middle of a, of a. Water treatment plant, a, a total upgrade of the water treatment plant, we're basically gonna get a brand new water treatment plant inside the shadow of this existing building. And, well, clearly there's, because we're replacing it, there's a need, so things are breaking, you know, and that's why we need to replace the plant.
Oh, oh, hold on one second.
What's up, is it not working?
I just wanted us to stop for a moment while she.
Thank you. Uh, so Aaron, uh.
So what's the presenting here?
There's a control panel, uh, certain filters, it's, it's, it's old, it's a very old plant, um, it's, we're still, me, I was actually up there, I went up specifically to double check. Once I heard we needed emergency repairs, myself and Blue went up and met with Bruce Keeping, who's the plant operator, and Shelley, who's my inherent member from the county health department. To go over everything and make sure that the things we're repairing aren't harming our water supply, causing any risk of a public, uh, health issue. So the water's still perfectly fine, and actually, we're very, very careful, so it, when we say emergency water plant repairs, it doesn't mean Bruce is up there with duct tape trying to hold things together, that means.
Yeah, it's scary.
We've got so many redundancies and layers in there that it's just, we, one of our layers of redundancy, yeah, one of our layers of redundancy is need to work the emergency repair, so.
The wiring.
We're good, it's getting fixed, it's just a little duct tape and bailing wire in these next few months until we get the new plant up.
Yeah, we are not taking cheese puffed up there and doing it our.
No, I just went up there with a gallon of the iodine, like a camping tank, just shook it into the reservoir and we're all fine. Um, and we're gonna, gonna wait for Katie to get back before we do anything more official business. Hmm?
I was.
Yeah, we do. That is not a bad idea, wait, is that just gonna be the wrong one here? What's that titled? What's the subtitle?
Uh, it was for certain. Why aren't you in plan?
I would be the first.
Yeah, okay, so.
Okay, right.
Yeah, how much is the budget modification for?
Here, you can have that if you want to, it's a, it's a second, uh, that's a control panel, there's the filters, uh, let's see, Siemens.
No, I have it, it says on the number, oh, good, yeah.
Here, do you want, do you, here, just take the paperwork, I don't need it after this.
That's, that's the Siemens, the next one is the aqua.
This is Siemens. Yeah, but they're both for the water plant.
No, but we haven't done that one, you wanna do that one here?
No, that's a figure right here. Um. That's not working. Uh, you know, I don't remember, it's on the top of my head here.
What was that?
I don't recall, but you can call and ask you for something in line, and she'll tell you.
The answer.
Yeah. And I may have given you, I may have given you the wrong one, we've got two that we're dealing with tonight.
Yeah.
But, um.
Who do you want to just do both?
It gave me both are control panel and water treatment. Thank you.
Filter control, they're both at the water treatment plant, two different things, same place. So, yeah, why don't we do that, where's the other one? No, no, it's, it's either one of them.
It's right on the back.
Oh, you know what, we did do that, we just had two memos about it.
No, because one is a, never.
It's not, yeah, but, but they were just, this is, we approved both, cause they're both emergency repairs for the, to the.
Yeah, but we didn't name aqua.
We didn't name Siemens either.
Well, we should.
No, the motion, no, Katie, could you read back the motion about this?
That you moved to, um. That you moved to accept the budget modifications as set forth by Jane, uh, Jane Truwalker, and that you moved Sally second, five ayes.
Okay. So, uh, all right, so I will move then to also approve the, um, repairs for the filter control pan, panel.
Second.
Uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, uh, here, you want?
Okay, now you can do it, now you can do them all.
Here, and with that, uh, Aaron, unless there's anything else, uh, we're gonna go into executive session, interview supplemental shade treaters.
So we don't keep them all night?
Um.
I love your dress.
I'll move to executive session for the purposes of interviewing panelers for shade treatment mission, and are you just here to keep them company?
Second.
You can't come in with us.
All right, uh, all, so it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I, Ramondo, you wanna come first?
Please.
All right, let's just go through the list then. Actually, well, um, now the review of the liquor license, Sal. Um, yeah, could you, uh.
It's all in order, everything is fine, so we do not need to discuss it before we take any action.
Good.
And they were invited, they just weren't unable to attend.
Beautiful.
Well, my only question about that is, in, when we discussed it last time, we said we would do a positive letter or a negative letter.
Do you wanna still do that?
Do they want a positive letter?
I'm not sure.
Do they care, I think they just wanna hear if we have an objection.
Yeah, I think that's our real problem, if we have a problem.
I agree, I, I'm just saying this is what we said, I, I'm more than willing to not do that, but I don't know if that was. I agree, I, I'm just saying this is what we said, I, I'm more than willing to not do that, but I don't know if that was part of our motion.
We got the minutes.
We really ignored the motion. We just accepted the process.
We accept, I believe, and everyone has the minutes, I believe we accepted just the process, I don't think, it was a suggestion that we do the other, but I don't think it was part of the motion.
I mean, I, I think that the intention behind sending a yes or no, like a positive or a negative, is that we're not singling out?
Well, if we have a major problem or have a continuing problem, what we really are going to do is notify the state liquor authority that they're having problems.
Yeah.
And this is.
And the liquor authority really doesn't care if there are problems.
I don't think, I mean, truly, I don't think they're gonna care, we have a problem to.
They said they would, that's why I know.
All right, well anyway, let's move on, we don't need to take any action.
Yeah.
Can I say one thing of, uh related to this? Um I was talking to Amanda and she had a really great idea about a way that we can do this and advertise it to the community is just having it posted online. Who's, who's up when, um and.
Well, it does appear on our agenda, so.
Well, well, I'm saying if it's just up there, it would, it would help to allow the community, you know, though they'd have the knowledge, if they want to, if they've been waiting all year for that moment, they can take advantage of that, and then we don't have to worry about whether or not we've publicized this, or, you know, if people didn't know and then they come to us and say that they didn't know, it, we could say it's online.
This has never been a proper place, so.
Well, well, this is, well, oh, no, 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 I, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not talking about it, I'm not talking about what was in front of us right now, I'm just saying in general, I thought that Amanda's idea was really good.
Yeah, that was a good idea.
Um.
I don't know if that's, I mean, should we implement it now or should we write something up?
I, I kind of just thought, thought of it, since we were talking about it, so brought, I brought it up.
Yeah.
Well, we're, uh, we're already, that's true, but we're already, I mean, at our next tech meeting, we have to start, you know, s- uh doing outlines of what, of content. You know, cause we're gonna need to provide all the content, website, so, and since we're already looking into, you know, online forums and anything anyway.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point.
You know, and indexing all of our records, so this would get, this would get pulled in at some point, it just may not be a prior, uh, one of the first things that happens.
Sally asked for my draft, and, and it's an uncorrected draft at this moment, on July eleventh, the last line was that Deputy Mayor Rhodes made a request to move the process. Trusty Kimbitts seconded five a, five ayes, motion passed, so it wasn't anything specific about the letter being included or not included, it was just that you moved the process. That you had, that you had written out for the board.
Okay.
Uh all right, uh discussion of Team New Pauls, I don't know whether it's Stuart or Ariana. I'm sorry, I'm about the, the form, um one, one thing that I wanted to point out or just to mention is, um, you know, we could have disagreements, but then, as far as I'm concerned, um, the board doesn't really have to approve forms, um if we're just getting information, but, you know, I, mostly because I couldn't see any reason why it would matter necessarily.
Okay.
But, you know, but, but maybe this is a specific thing, because of our volunteers and the, and our events, you know?
I guess I just think of it as like anything that's going out that says Village of New Pauls is something that we are putting forth, so I wanna make sure that any piece of paper that's representing us in any way is something that we all agree upon.
Yeah.
I will.
Okay, so I'll move approval of the village of New Pauls on here and we do a mature.
Brian, were you gonna, were you gonna move that?
No, I wasn't.
Second.
Um, so, um number one, I was gonna say that I feel forms are representation of our policies, and I feel they are very important. So I think, I think any form change that we have, we're bringing in different information, and I think that is a change in policy, and I think so that they do um require review from the board. Um and also, I think that this one, for example, we should probably put on Village Letterhead, I think that'd be like this.
Yeah.
You know, aesthetically, I, you know.
I, I mean, I, I would agree, um, this was this way because I just like made it.
Yeah, okay, um, so if we could change that, I also, um, it says contacts you personally?
Oh yeah, that, that was totally because this was used um for, in, for the intern, that, where we tabled at the internship there.
Uh for the last one. Okay, so I was thinking, um, that could be Village Clerk and then she could disseminate that to the board, so then when we need to make decisions or interview people, you know, everyone gets to see it and say, oh, shoot, that's, you know, is, is, what, how's the, what's the board doing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely.
I'll, I'll check that.
I, I think it shouldn't be to me.
I'm just gonna just want.
That was solely because I was the one tabling, and I knew that I would be there and you came too, but.
For a volunteer to commit.
Do we need, that's what this is for, I believe, right?
Right, it's volunteer and uh internship, so it's for all committees as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, this would be really good to get a PDF and get up on the webpage, I think that's great, um.
And then what's your Village Clerk's?
Village, Village Clerk online, she, they, they can email it or we could, you know, drop in a hard copy. And, I mean, really, otherwise, I think it's, it's very good.
I do, could.
Yeah, and then we won't have the issues with people living in the village or not living in the village, we just give this to every single person who wants to apply to committees. And we'll have like a nice, you know, catalog of them and.
Is the board hoping that we go retroactive with them and that I try to communicate to the, the current boards to collect it?
No, 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 no. No, so we can, we can do it as the next re-ord happens or something, you know, when people's terms expire, it's like.
Okay, my motion, it accepts the changes the plans suggested.
Do we want, since we've never required it, do we want education, employment, and references for people who are volunteering? Like, is that something, I, like, I'm thinking about, if I wanna serve on the PNCC, like, is, why do I have to tell you where my last three employees are?
Right.
I guess, I, I'd like to interject, I guess, briefly, um, thi- this was, this is not what Stuart's item was. Um and I think that this is go, this would be more useful for somebody that does wanna do an internship. Um as opposed to a village resident, for that very reason Stuart had said to me earlier, um that they might not need to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, I saw a Villa, I saw a tabling, I went to my.
Well, well, this, this will, yes, I mean, it is, but that's not, that, this wasn't Stuart's item, this was my item.
Okay.
That went along, but not.
I, I, I wanted to make the point that for an internship, I think this is a great application.
Right.
And perhaps, uh perhaps for a board and commission, I don't know that it would be good. But this one twenty-fifth anniversary tabling that we're gonna do, we're looking for broad, um speaking with the people from the village to come along with Team New Pauls and volunteer for various things. So I don't, I, I told Ariana, I don't think we need to get all that data about those people.
Okay.
We can make a simpler form, gets their name and address and contact information, and maybe have a checklist of, are you interested in these things? Cleanups, Dr. Park, whatever it is.
Okay.
Uh and then other, where they can write something in, and just get that initial feedback so that we can get them into some kind of a, a system. Because I don't, I don't think that we need to get that kind of detailed information for somebody who's gonna come help us clean up the streets.
For the ones.
Exactly.
Sure, yeah, if you're, if you're just catching a list, I agree, but if someone checks, I'd like to be on a board or someone at the vacancies, then we'd be able to.
And you give them one or the other one.
We can, well, we can just get their email address and then send it to them.
No, what I was gonna just suggest, based on that, is Brian's idea of the letterhead. The top half of the front page would be for volunteers, for commissions, boards.
Sure.
And all the, the whole thing would be the internship application, so we really have two applications.
Sure, I mean, I mean.
Yeah.
But it's really, it's really three applications, because we're, in this Team New Pauls concept, we're looking for people to volunteer and, and maybe for things that we don't even have yet. It's not a formal commission under the code, it's different categories of things, we're gathering names for, hopefully people will, will help us with things and we'll see how it comes out.
Right.
So I think that can be, that part can be really simple.
Sure.
Yeah.
And they don't have to be from the village, they could be from Arkansas, if they wanna come and help us clean the park, hey.
Anyway, right. Sure.
Come on down.
Right, I mean, I think I completely agree with you, and I think go for that.
Three forms?
But I think that for this, I actually, I do think that we could have volunteers, like if you wanna be on a commission or a committee or whatever, like, I mean, it doesn't, it's not like, it doesn't have to be super in-depth, I mean, for the internship, obviously, you're gonna wanna fill out more. If, you know, you wanna do whatever commission, you could fill out what's relevant, or leave out what's relevant, but if you're, you know, all up.
Yes. Maybe you majored in like, if our mental science, they're like.
Right, and wanna be on the ENCC, might be, and that's all you have to put, and that you're a village resident, we could even have like necessary fields, unnecessary field, or something like that.
Yeah.
But I think, I think it would help too in the interview process, cause if this person says, and then they come in and we say, you know, we just talk with them for five minutes as opposed to going through the same interrogation process.
I, I think we're anticipating for the third category, that maybe we'll have ten things listed in a place for other.
Okay.
And, and if they sign up and wanna do it, I don't anticipate them being interviewed, cause they're coming out to help clean up the street, it's, it's not, it's not an official kind of thing.
To do. Clean up. Right. Sure.
So I think we need a simpler form for that.
Okay.
Which we can put together quickly and have available at the, you know, the hundred and fifty fifth anniversary.
And a sign up sheet.
And then have those available also for people who are, wanna get more heavily involved with our other.
Sure, now, what, is this with us because that was the original intention of having this at the one twenty-fifth? Or is this just something?
We had talked about this.
I went with the one twenty-fifth.
Well, we had talked about this at our last meeting, and my, my intention was that we would use it at the one twenty-fifth. Since then, Stuart and I talked, cause he saw it and said, you know, I don't think we, basically the conversation we just had.
So we, we don't need to talk about this right yet, cause there's another, we're gonna change it?
Yeah, so we're just gonna do it all.
Well, there's not gonna be another um meeting prior to using it, right?
I'm sorry, I could've sworn I just heard that for the one twenty-fifth, all we need is a sign up sheet, and that this should be split into one for volunteers, one for interns.
What I suggested was.
Yeah, and we would be using them at, 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 on, what's the date, the fifth?
The fifth.
The fifth.
The top half of this, for people that wanna serve on a committee or an advisory board for the village, this form for the internship. And non-committee volunteers who wanna go picking up trash with us someday, or planting a tree, just one-time item, this is a sign up sheet, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we would give them some examples of what they might check off if they're interested in.
So we're at three forms.
But, but as far as I'm concerned, you guys can use whatever forms you make up, edit whatever points, so it doesn't get out of the way.
Okay, well, I, I just.
And actually, more, more importantly, you shouldn't have had to do this, because we honestly should have had a volunteer form probably years ago to get this information, so.
I mean, I made it, you know, a year ago, so it doesn't matter now.
The third category is. I know, yeah, but you know.
But Brian is right, we should.
Just on principle.
Yeah.
You know, all right, so what motion do we need to make and get on?
He's made, uh seconded, just let's say aye.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No?
I don't, I.
Is that?
I don't know what the motion was.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the motion, I didn't make a motion.
Sally made the motion, you seconded.
Motion was.
I did, Sally made the motion.
But you add, Sally made the motion, you seconded, you added to the.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you say, Sally said, let the clerk, uh, since this term begins right in front of, let her repeat, lead back for us.
Yeah.
Sally made the motion to accept the form, um and Brian seconded, and then Brian added into the part that, um, all forms should, that he felt that all forms, because they're a representation of policy in, um, in the village, um, should be discussed, and then we're at the point of voting.
Okay, so my apologies, so.
Letterhead, he also said letterhead.
Right, Sally, wait. Um briefly, can I just drop that, please?
Uh, no, no, yeah.
Trying to wrap it together.
Yeah, I know, I know, okay, so for the one twenty-fifth, I say just do a sign up sheet, but I really like this idea for our volunteer, that, that's what I thought, that's what I thought we were doing, is adopting this as like our documentation, yeah, for all volunteers, so if you wanna make that a separate motion, cause I didn't think we were just using this for the one twenty-fifth, so I don't know how you wanna do that.
Um, yeah, well, I, no, I mean, I think we should, we should make that, make exactly what you're saying, I mean, what, the motion that's on the table.
Is that?
Is that.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with the changes, Village Letterhead and who to contact.
Okay. Delightful.
All right, good, so your second is still good?
Second's still valid.
Any other concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.
If anyone else would like to join us on that day for taking a time at the table, we'd be happy to have you.
I would love to.
I have a feeling I might be busy.
I think.
Tea and a, yeah, I have a feeling.
I think you would be busy.
All right, uh well, for no reason whatsoever, just cause I wrote it in this place, let's talk about the chicken law next. Um, oh wait, no, I'm sorry, did we get?
Team New Pauls.
That didn't hit any of your issues, did it, I'm sorry, so I got very confused, so please, Stuart, do the volunteers.
Well, the issues were, were, were gonna be there on that day, and we just wanted to clarify where we are in the forms, so you heard that. Uh we're also gonna be uh pursuing a further memo that we had and we discussed and was approved about the Team New Pauls concept that we'll be moving forward, trying to find, you know, to perhaps, you know, establish the not-for-profit e- uh entity so that we can start the um endowment fund, and also uh be seeking people, uh entities or people who would be interested in adopting a park for the parks that we have. So we're, we're proceeding on all of those which was approved by this board, but just to update you, and that will be it.
Thank you. Uh all right, and just for arbitrariness, cause it's next on my piece of paper, let's talk about the chicken law.
Um, so I actually, I, I mean, I spoke to Sally, um, I got, I got some, some substantial, um, grammatical, uh he even wrote me an essay in the back, uh edits from Stuart. Um and really, they, none, none of it is philosophical, all of it is grammatical. Um, I mean, I guess there might be one or two things, uh like the idea of the property owner or property manager, and he thought we should remove property manager. Um and I felt like that was a good thing, and I couldn't really remember why I wanted property owner to begin with, um, but.
Property manager.
Right, property manager, sorry, everybody knew what I meant, um, but so I, I would accept all of these, but I know that Jason, you also had something that you wanted.
Jason's ring for Bruce.
I can speak for myself. I'm sitting right next to you, you say your opinions, let me tell you the stuff you do my opinion.
Sorry, I speak for him.
Yeah, I know. Stop, go and talk to, talk to Brian. Um, no, I, no, there was a, basically, I like, I actually like, cause I had sent you Thursday morning, um, a way of, a different way of writing one, but I liked yours better. Yours is simpler and straightforward, more straightforward, because this was the issue of, um, at first, it was uh six per half acre or what, whatnot. And this goes, brings it down to what I was thinking more reasonable is three, so you could have smaller lots than the half acre, so we don't end up having, it's the issue of, you know, so we don't have the wealthiest landlords, we're the only ones able to have chickens. And because I didn't know if that was uh gonna be controversial, um, I'm glad that, and so thanks for putting that in with the new language. But I did check with, um, I, I wanna make sure, I checked with Kathy, because, uh, you know, we have two kind of, two controls in here, one is the lot size and one is the licensing procedure. And it just seemed to me that we don't need to have the lots control how many chickens, because we already have many more controls in the licensing. Um so I asked Kathy, so here's, because all of the chicken coops have to meet all its uh setback requirements and the, then the code, which means, I checked with Kathy and she says that it would mean um, things like, you know, if you, it was in the backyard, or it would have to be a certain size, so actually, I, I apologize, I couldn't pronounce the email, but she sent me it, I'll just, you know, I'm just gonna tell you what she said, rather than try to paraphrase it, um, just for, just for our conversation in general, um, cause it came up last time. Um, oh jeez, come on, Kathy.
In the meantime, I could tell you a fun fact, um, that will quell some of Stuart's concerns about how you can tell whether it's a male or a female when they're babies.
Thank you. Please.
If it is a male, their wingtips, um, when you look at their wingtips, they're all even and flat, um, and they'll be all in line, but if you look at a female's wingtips, when they're chicks, they look more like this, like, they'll have like every other one, they'll be a little, they'll be a little bit more sad. So you don't have to worry about what their genitalia look like, we can tell just by their wings.
Let's, let's, please, no longer talk about Stuart's concern with chicken genitalia, cause we're not on the topic.
That was, that was awful paraphrasing what I, I didn't say that for.
Well, look, this is what, this is what our building inspector had to say when I asked for advice on, uh.
I didn't, I didn't meet your concerns there.
There may be other reasons to limit the lot size, but mine was thinking public health, and so she just wrote back, in regards to the proposed chicken law in the village, I see no reason to limit the lot size to lots greater of, sorry, typo, greater than one half acre or greater. That sentence is duplicative, I see no reason to limit the lot size to lots greater than one half acre, given the fact that a coop will need to meet all zoning setback requirements. This, along with fencing and good maintenance, would reduce any health issues, please feel free to ask should you have additional questions. So, um, may, when we get to the public hearing, I guess, if the size of the lot is an issue, we, it may not, uh, it shouldn't be because of public health, maybe for other reasons, but.
Now, uh by, by reading the proposal here, if you have less than a quarter of an acre, can you have any chickens?
No.
No.
Okay.
We don't have many parcels smaller than a quarter acre.
No, but you said you could.
But, but in terms of meeting sets. But but in terms of meeting setback requirements, if your property is smaller than that, you probably, you couldn't.
Hmm.
I wouldn't think so, but.
You know, I I wanna ask Kathy, maybe that's something I asked Kathy.
We we have, we got time.
Yeah. Cause all, that's really the, 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 the only question.
So are these revisions all gonna be done and Joe looked at by August sixth?
Yes.
Um, maybe.
Eighth.
Or yeah.
Eight, I keep saying, I don't know, I keep saying sixth.
But, so alright, so that's, uh.
Yeah, because I really, I mean, the bottom line is Stuart's edits were really good and I'd rather pass a law that's gonna be better for us to uphold and enforce and take a little longer to do it.
And do we wanna clarify, number one, if if you have a small lot, but you still meet the setback requirements, should you be allowed to have a couple chickens?
You know, the thing is that they, I think it wouldn't be right to, to the chickens, um, because they get lonely and I think it would, I mean, they're supposed to be in groups.
Of three?
Flocks, well, exactly, that's why three is, is is good.
But I mean, if you, if you had, if you had a lot, probably there's a sixth of an acre. But a chicken coop for three chickens would meet all the setback requirements, should you be allowed to have chickens?
I don't think that could possibly, but.
If, uh, assume it is possible, for argument.
Assume.
Is there any reason you shouldn't be allowed to have chickens if your tiny lot meets all setback requirements and all other licensing provisions?
I I guess not.
Uh, yeah, and that's, that was my thinking is from zero to a quarter, it's three, from a quarter to a half is another three, it's like, for every quarter. An acre or fraction, I don't know, whatever the language would be. That, so that's why I asked Kathy, you know, is it, is lot size, does lot size determine health issue?
Why, why, I mean, well, why don't we, why don't we ask her about that in terms of setbacks?
Yeah, and why is that back even possible, you know? But, um, I'll ask her tomorrow, cause I'm just curious, but, and if, if, if it's true, I will email, I'll email you some, some lang, some possible language.
Okay. Um, and yeah, I mean, if, if anybody else has any other edits, um, I would, I am totally willing to accept them since I'm gonna be doing this anyway. Um, I think that everyone else did get their comments to me, but feel free, Brian and Sally.
The one thing I noticed was that it didn't say the metal container was supposed to be covered. It just says in a metal container. I don't know, or like.
Originally, you said a covered metal container.
Stuart's edits are a closed, secure metal container.
Well played, sir. The metal container, the brick on top.
Yeah.
Alright, um, so we can, or anything, any other comments before we have the final sprint for free chickens for everyone? Chicken in every yard, two cars in every pot.
I do think there should.
No cars.
Me, I really do think our purpose is we each other, we have got to start picking up the phone and making our suggestion changes.
I agree.
We've talked about this added to an item.
Alright, moving on, uh, we'll just, let's just go down the list and then we'll hit the, the other items, uh, number six.
Katie has a question.
I'm so sorry, just for the point of mo, of the minutes, so as I, I'm assuming no motion.
Just all you have to do is put, say, no action, that's all, that's all it is in the minutes.
No action, just one, just one minute.
I'll move those two questions.
Thank you, I'll second, any, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Yeah, I hope if you have a little question.
Wait, what did you, what is the motion?
Approving those things, I'm just finishing this up and then go for the additional.
Yes, I.
Um, uh, number seven, I'll move the approval of a loan for the water fund to the sewer fund.
I think we have to approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, any questions? Cause that, that one might have some questions, yeah, Sally?
Approve the resolution of the loan. It's not just approving the loan, you need to resolve that.
It's the same.
The treasury of the office transfer.
You know, I'll just be the first sentence.
Yeah.
Uh, and Katie, you can just take the motion right from this, the, this part of the packet, so you don't even have to write it down right now. Um, so I move that we authorize the village treasurer to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from the general fund and loan it to the sewer fund. Just seeing if there's anything else that needs to be in the motion. To be repaid in full by the, the end of the twenty thirteen fiscal year as required by law.
Second.
Uh, any questions?
Ariana had already seconded.
Um, put it that I withdrew the first motion, and, cause it was such a significant rephrasing. Um, any questions for the loan? Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Um, I will move to rescind the designation made at the reorganization meeting of the Times Square Express as the official newspaper. And appoint the daily briefing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, um, let's skip the minutes for, for the moment, uh, we do have one more executive session and we have a couple more additional items, so let's get the, let's get the policy stuff done before we do the minutes.
Ellen Rocco.
I'm sorry, you wanted to add that to the agenda?
Yeah, with that, you said you took care of the executive session, so you should have taken care of that when you came out. I'll move to appoint Ellen Rocco to the historic.
Thank you. Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, I didn't know what you were talking about, but. Um, alright, now what else do we have? Uh, we have local food week, we have, we did that, what else, uh, what else do we have here?
That's it.
Is it just local food week? We did everything?
Brian, we did Brian, we did chicken law, oh, I want planning priorities.
Parking, no, planning priorities.
Please, you know, I have three, three firsts.
I'll give it to you.
Did you? I have Ariana, I have Brian.
I'm gonna just do another one, that's fine.
You're gonna do another?
I can, if it's not great, I hand it to you on the right side.
Oh, but then I must have, okay.
Um, alright, so the local food week, I think is the last one, Ariana, you take that?
Yeah, um, well, I think you're all familiar with local food week and, uh, how that go, how that is going to be, um, an annual thing. This will be the second annual local food week and this year, um, we'd like to do an eat in the street and, um. The date is chosen because, um, Saturday the sixth is Coda. Um, and it, it is the first week of October that is local food week, so, um, the first is a Monday, so Sunday the seventh is really the only weekend day that's an option. Um, and I realized, I got an email, I didn't include a time here, but, um, we figured from eleven to four with the, with half hour. In the beginning and the end for setup and breakdown and the event would go from, um, eleven thirty to three thirty. And, uh, it, and the idea being that we can close Main Street, um, from, because we, because we really wanna include Water Street Market, um, in this event. Um, partially because they do a good amount of local food stuff, um, at the places that are there. But also because it would be a great spot to have a band at the end of it. Um, so we thought that we can close the street. From Main on, uh, the corner by Starbucks and P and G's, um, you know, where Platteville North Front meet. To Chestnut and then have Chestnut open to traffic and then close it, you know, across the street, much like they do in New York City for street fairs. Um, and the avenues will be open and, uh, the streets will be closed, but, um. And then close it from the corner of Chestnut and Main, across the street, down to the corner of Water Street and Huguenot. Um, but leave that open so that people can go around and still make it over the bridge and be okay.
I will move to give concept approval pending the, um, understanding with. The supervisor of D P W that this street plan can in fact be implemented. And two, suggest that, 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 that discussion will occur after the one hundred and twenty fifth celebration after we have learned. From how that all worked.
Okay, um, I was thinking that the chief of police might be a good person to talk to, I don't know if you saw my email about that.
I do. Do both.
Um, okay, um, and, and I don't know in terms of D O T, I don't really, I don't really know what the process is that we just went through, but, um.
We're learning it, yeah.
But I figure.
Karen has a copy of the form, form thirty three A is what you need.
Okay.
Um, but those, and it's simple up to that, it's conditions, you have to provide a path.
That's fine, yeah, this is, that, I'm sure wouldn't be a, a problem, but, okay, cool. Um, yeah, I just, I didn't wanna move forward with any kind of planning without your approval, that everybody.
And and Ariana doesn't understand that, because we had talked about it early on, that, that no employee time.
Thinks this is okay.
You know, D P W time is involved.
Yeah, that's not something that's a part of this.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that's actually possible is my concern, so that's why I was hoping we could talk to Blue as well.
Right.
Cause I'm, you know, God knows what the jurisdictional things are, like the cops are not gonna stand there at, at barricades necessarily, or set up them up, or put out the details.
I mean, when I've closed ch, streets before, the barricades were there, dropped off on Friday and we used them on Sunday. And then put them back where we found them and they were picked up on Monday.
Yeah.
And we never had any D P W overtime and we never had any of those presence.
Yeah. I don't know, I was, I, I would be concerned, I wouldn't want to run into a roadblock down the, a month that we could have foreseen.
Right. Right, well, but, well, this is, I mean, I guess this is just my, this is my thought process, it's from my experience with street closures here.
Well, with the pending, so.
And I, and I really don't, yeah, I mean, I don't see her, uh, and I, I think, uh, you know, in terms of having it be necessary for presence to be there, I think it'd be fine.
So you're, so you're okay with concept approval and?
Who's second?
Nobody.
Nobody seconded? Second.
I'll second, I'll second, I'll second it.
Okay.
Um, you're okay with concept approval and pending, like, the details may change depending on the conversations that, you know. Then what would be coming back?
You're shaking your head, no, you don't wanna give it.
What was afterwards, what's the?
She doesn't have to come back, we'll let her, we're gonna give her.
What's your problem?
Number one is, I feel like. Request, like, we've got to send out a parade request, like, no, are we, like?
You know, I went and looked for a parade request form, but the form doesn't have any kind of street closure on it, so I looked for the new form, but we didn't actually have a new form.
Okay.
So I wrote a letter.
So that's. And, so.
I don't disagree with you.
Right.
Oh, you know what, you know what, we do have one. It's form thirty three A of the D O T that we require to, to file every time we close Main Estate Road for more than ten minutes.
Yeah, but.
So that has more, all that information and more than this parade route, and it's specific to a.
What do people do when they throw parades though, in downtown? What requests do we get?
That's a parade request form.
So isn't that the same thing as shutting down, is there a people file when they shut down the street?
No. No, everybody's written us a letter.
Well, I can tell you from memory, the library writes a letter.
Okay.
Saint Joseph's writes a letter, the Reformed Church writes a letter, it is by letter of request.
Okay.
To close, so that team might want.
I think we, we might second that.
That, that's why I went to the form first and I was like, if I go to fill this out, it doesn't, it doesn't ask me any of the information that I wanna give to you.
Right.
So, and it's not a parade route.
Right, it's not a parade.
Right.
It's a street closure, which is, which would be either a separate form or a checkbox on that form.
Hell, right. But don't we, don't we close the streets, don't we close the streets when we have a parade?
Yeah.
Uh, not the same way.
The barricade.
Yeah, right, you know, right, right, you're closing, you're closing the street, I mean, like, cars getting.
Well, usually, like, after the Halloween parade, there's a cop car that's following parade and then the rest of traffic after that.
This, you know, the reason I think we should probably use this D O T form, if it's, or a section of it, is, because think about this, Brian, is that.
I'll give you the form, I don't care.
When the parade, when the parade happens, like, like the Halloween parade goes down the street. We're not setting out detours or having people, the cops, you know.
It's just the police.
It's just, people gotta sit in traffic behind a parade for ten, fifteen minutes while it goes by, and then they just keep going.
So this is.
But if this is going on and this is a massive amount, Main, Main Street from the bridge to P and G's.
Right.
Means, and then the detour routes are gonna be through historic districts, it's gonna be through, you know, twisting, you know, turns.
Right.
We, we need a lot more information from Ariana's event than we do from, from the Halloween parade.
I agree.
And so that, like, that's why the D O T thing actually has to, you have to draw out where the.
Perfect, yeah.
Where the detour routes are gonna be and, and how are you gonna manage traffic and what's been, you know, it requires you to answer all those questions, so maybe we could just do that.
So can we just, yeah, use their form?
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I just wanted to know that I should fill out that form.
Since we have to anyway, yeah.
That's essential, and then my, my other real concern is diverting traffic down Huguenot Street. Because, you know, like, I mean, there are concerns with traffic going through there and shaking the old foundations and redirecting a day's worth of traffic through. Does that have any consequences, are there any?
That would be one issue since that, that you can't go straight through that, you have to be more specific, specifically because cars were shaking the gin has her pa, pa, part, that's a part. And that's why that matters for us, so.
Well, what about? What about the detour being Platteville?
On the other, on the other side of the Main Street.
Well.
You'd have to head down the Water Street.
So this is.
Mohawk Ave to Water Street.
Right.
So this is why I'm saying that, that's why, that's why I asked about constant rule, because I can't vote in favor of this if we're agreeing to all the particulars. Because I don't think some of the particulars are workable yet, but I'm not sure, but Joe Snyder would know.
Well, that, that's why I wanted concept approval, I wasn't asking for a particular.
Yeah. That's what I was asking, that's what I was asking, yeah.
I think not, concept approval.
I mean, if, if it ends up being that we close the street for the sa, the same distance that the, the one twenty fifth is, I think we'll, we're not gonna cry about it.
Right.
Um, but, but it would be, I think it would be really nice to include more of our downtown businesses.
And at least we have all the detour routes.
I like, yes. Sure.
In the ability to have street front, like, I'm sorry, uh, like a street front area for themselves.
Sure.
So, my motion stays the same, concept approval pending discussion.
Depending the detail, depending us getting a copy of the form, if you feel that, you know, awesome, uh, so, uh, you were seconded, any other discussion?
Yeah. Cool.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys.
Alright, thank you.
Do you want to just break before we?
No, we, we, we did agree, didn't we? Yeah, let's take a, take a five minute break before we dr, dive into the minutes. Um. Yeah. And we're all still sitting here.
Are we, are we tending on doing on that tonight?
That's what we're gonna talk about, yeah, let's, let's have a break.
Five minutes.
I, I don't really.
What's that?
I mean, I'm sitting here, cause I don't really need, need a break.
So we do have one other thing for the agenda, a brief, it is time sensitive, um, and then, uh, at Stuart's suggestion, we'll go into executive session and then do the minutes. Since the executive session might, might bear, have bearing on, on something about the minutes.
Oh, why you?
So here's this, uh, one issue is, um. We have, uh, for the vendors for the hundred and twenty fifth, we've been charging, I mean, whatever, we've been charging fifty or a hundred bucks. Um, you know, included in that has been the ten dollar processing fee from the village, so we just need to decide whether we want that or not. Um, so, do we, basically, are we willing to waive the ten, our ten dollars of that hundred? Um, for our, the hundred and twenty fifth birthday party?
I would suggest we waive it because I believe in the budgeting and all of that, but I have seen. That the full amount is, is being counted in to offset expenses, so I would move that we waive.
Yeah, it's more like an, an accounting thing, because we have to account for the money and why we didn't keep ten bucks from every permit. You, you.
Yeah, I kind, I kinda have a problem with that, um.
You don't like. How so?
Because I, I, I don't know, we never, we never discussed the amount of time and resources are, it was going to take from our employees to put this on. Um, and I, and I didn't, I was not aware, it was, I mean, the, the problem that Kurt took care of, you know, that was not his. That, I didn't think that he should be doing that, we have a lot of things that he should be doing, um, that we hired him to do, and that was not one of them, but it was an unforeseen problem.
And honestly, I didn't even know he was working on it until you'd already finished it.
Well, regardless, um, it was an unforeseen problem, so we, you know, couldn't have planned for, well, it wasn't completely unforeseen, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, but, but regardless, doesn't matter what it is, I think that, I think that money should go back to the village to cover at least. You know, even if it's two percent of our costs. I mean, cause we're gonna be paying people overtime that day, aren't we, like, you know, I just, I mean, I don't know.
It is, you know, uh, for the village is, I guess, the only arg, the.
Local, what are, local food week is for the village?
Not, no, it's not a village sanctioned.
Yeah, it is.
No, it isn't. It's a concept approval.
No, I'm not talking about what we just did, I mean, local food week is a village sanctioned event.
I meant, this, this event is the village's anniversary, so I, whatever, it doesn't matter, uh, it's, it's, it would be, I, how, how many vendors do we have? I can't even remember right now. We're talking about a, a couple hundred dollars.
I don't know, to me, it's the principal of it, it's hard to know how much money it is.
How many vendors do we have?
My estimation. My estimation is we have about twenty vendors who actually will be permitted for that day.
So whether, basically, it's, should the hundred and twenty fifth ad hoc committee, um, reimburse the village two hundred dollars for putting on the village's worth of labor? Is, kind of the way of, it, it rests in my head, but I think she.
That's not how logically compute, computes for me.
No, clearly, no, it's not.
What? Sorry, that is not how it logically computes for me, so I was getting on.
Yeah. Well, what about, uh, Stuart and Brian, what do you guys think?
I, I, I think of it another way too, and, and maybe we better just run this by our council, that I don't wanna get, um. Stuck with having somehow that this is a fundraiser that the village is doing, which it's not allowed to do.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if taking some of the money would put us in a different category or not, but I think we should check that for a hundred or two hundred dollars.
It's not, it wasn't.
It certainly wouldn't be worth.
That's why I think we ought to.
Doing something that's not, not, uh.
I mean.
Appropriate. I don't know the answer to that, but I think we should check, that's all.
When we were doing the vendors, when we talked about this, uh, what, the, the reason that we had the conversation is, uh, uh, when we're talking about. Because the village had a, a fee, but we wanted to charge vendors to help. Because the village had a a fee, but we wanted to charge vendors to help fund the event. Rather than have them pay the hundred and twenty fifth and then come in and pay again, we figured, alright, we'll just. It's all inclusive, yeah, the hundred bucks or fifty bucks includes the the fee for the village. So we we that's what we told all the vendors, so they're expecting, you know, their whatever fee to come out of that. So it's it doesn't matter much one way or the other, there's a.
I don't have any problem with that, I just I just think we ought to make sure the council says however we're doing it, that it's appropriate. On the fundraising issue, otherwise it doesn't bother you, if that's not a problem, then I think either way is fine with me.
Brian, you care? It only matters if we wanna waive it, I mean, that's why it's this is the last meeting before the event, so if we don't wanna waive it, we don't have to do anything.
Alright, I'm gonna move to waive it pending.
Wait, I'm sorry, oh, you cut Brian out.
I feel like I'd prefer not to, but.
You don't wanna waive it?
I don't know, I think, alright, I made a good point about everything we've done and I think it's just a blurry line between. Like are are we doing this or is it a group throwing this outside of it, we're just approving the event?
I I think that's.
I think that's like, that's been, that was my issue earlier on down the road too.
I can go either way, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't care. So uh well, uh don't, then we'll throw the motion, cause the three of them wanna make sure that the village gets paid back. Money from the event.
We're gonna have to move it.
Yeah, no, they're they're not.
We don't have to take any action if we're not.
No, because we said that that was included in the fee and we never made a decision to waive it. Um so that was the decision we're making is whether we want to waive it, um just to make life easier for the.
The committee.
The committee is putting on.
And also it would address Stuart's concern, because if we waive it, then it's not fundraising at all.
We're no, there's no fun, oh, you mean because we're soliciting vendors?
That's why.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that, that was the point, the solicitation.
That's why I support waiving it, because then there is no question.
Well, let's, why don't we do this, we got a couple other things to do, um let's come back to this.
We have to remember to do it.
No, you don't wanna come back to this?
I mean, if if there's, if if three, I mean, I I don't know. If if it's gonna be three against two, like I'm I'm okay with voting no. And three people voting yes, I think you guys want that.
My interest is that it's o- okay by council, whatever we're doing.
We're not gonna have, we're not gonna get that advice in time, Stuart.
Okay.
We have to make the decision and and not Joe, um because we don't have, unless you wanna call a special meeting, which I don't think is, which would be counter. Intuitive to this, um.
Well, I mean, you could have a motion based on advice of council that we can get on the phone, you know, but but I don't know. So I guess the least dangerous thing would be to um to waive it.
I think too.
Um well, I was gonna suggest, because it sounded like as people talked and muddled over, we were getting a better understanding of. The issue, but if not, um.
So I move to waive it.
Alright, I'll second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No, based on.
Carries? And.
Add add into that then, based on lack of information.
We just record the votes, we don't record the reasons for them.
I can add something maybe to add to this.
Alright, fair enough. Um okay, um so I would, yeah, I could move to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Uh wait, that is the only reason, right? Yours is litigation too? Potential litigation, um uh you second it?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.